I'll let you know when we can start it.
Okay, I think we are good to go. So, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everybody. Thank you all for being here tonight. And certainly, thank you for all the work that you've been doing. It's, uh, we're getting down to it now. I know, um, uh, we'll go over a few procedural things for tonight. Uh, and then we'll get things going, uh, to the members of the public who are watching tonight. Thank you for being with us as well. Uh, so what we'll do, uh, tonight, obviously, I think everyone is aware, uh, that the, the plan is to, uh, have the task force, uh, go over the recommendations, uh, and actually go through the process of formally voting, uh, up or down on those recommendations. Um, so what we're gonna do, uh, is we're gonna have each subcommittee chair, uh, do a quick presentation, uh, on the recommendations, just, uh, as a reminder for, for all the task force members and for the public. Uh, we're not gonna do any discussion at that time. Uh, once we go through each of the, uh, presentations, we'll then move into a, a formal process, uh, of voting, and there will be time for discussion on each of the recommendations during the voting process. Um, we do have, uh, a couple of members who will be a little late joining us tonight. Uh, one of them is our chair, Dr. Coleman. Uh, so in his absence, uh, wanna thank, uh, Ms. McCallister Jacobs, who has agreed to, uh, facilitate the meeting this evening. Uh, and with that, Erica, if there, unless there's anything, oh, there is one piece that I did wanna remind, uh, the public and the task force before we get started. As the task force, obviously, was created by the county executive, um, and when the recommendations have been finalized and presented to the county executive, the next step will be the county executive taking those recommendations to the general assembly, uh, for further consideration, because the majority of the recommendations will require state legislation, uh, in order to, uh, implement. Uh, so just wanna make that point, especially for those watching, uh, publicly, as, as you see the vote tonight. Uh, the vote will be to, you know, ultimately, move recommendations to the county executive and then, uh, have the county executive move those on to the general assembly for further discussion, uh, because these, the majority of the, the recommendations are not, uh, something that can be implemented at the county level. So just wanted to put that out there. Uh, and Erica, with that, unless I'm missing anything, um, I will turn things over to, uh, Ms. McCallister Jacobs, and we can start to go through the, uh, the, the subcommittee reports.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. And I just wanna say again, on behalf of the chair, thanks to everyone for their participation in the committee, um, overall, and, uh, we're delighted that we're able to present some recommendations this evening. So I, Erica, I think you have the list of, of order. So, um, what we wanted to reiterate is that these are recommendations and that, um, to just remind the public and the committee that, you know, when you're talking about the legislative process, that it also means that there's gonna be legal review. And so as legal review happens, that'll also mean that they'll look at, um, what are the legal implications, if any, um, related to the recommendation. So just, you know, putting it out there that we have to, these are recommendations, and they'll have to go through a process.
That is correct. Thanks, Ms. Jacobs. So yes, we'll start with the board composition terms, I mean, excuse me, the board compensation, terms and professional development, um, subcommittee, and that it was chaired by, uh, Rosa Smith. So Rosa, I will bring up of the spreadsheet with the recommendations, um, and you could just go through those, um, in.
No problem. We'll do. Good, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. And we had four recommendations. Um, in this subcommittee, we dealt with board compensation, terms and professional development. Our first recommendation, um, Erica, if you could just move a little bit so that it's not cut off. I'm only up to four years, and then it cuts off a little bit, just at the bottom of the screen. All right. And then the bar, if you could move the bars where we could see the. Yep, yep, at the bottom.
Um, I only, I went to recommendation number one, so the.
Okay. All right. So, yep. Um, school board member compensation shall be increased to 27,000 and adjusted every four years. And that's where it cuts off, Erica. And I believe it's based on the cost of living adjustment. COLA, school board chair compensation shall be increased to 32,000 accordingly. Whoops. Perfect. Thank you so much. I'll redo that. Um, so our first recommendation is school board member, members compensation shall be increased to 27,000 and adjusted every four years by the calculated regional cost of living adjustment, known as COLA. School board chair compensation shall be increased to 32,000 and adjusted accordingly. Our second recommendation is school board members shall be limited to two terms. The terms do not have to be consecutive. We had, um, thank you, a strong, strong conversations back and forth regarding, uh, this one. And, um, and this is where we, we ended up in, in our final recommendation for this one. Our third recommendation, school board members will avail themselves to all professional development opportunities, including conferences sponsored by the National Board of Association, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, and the Council of Urban Board of Education. In addition, board members should report publicly their professional activities, um, and report out, report needs to be oral and in written delivery. And then we have a final recommendation. The board, the school board should participate in an annual retreat during which the board members assess and conduct self-evaluation. The self-evaluations should be made public and its findings, strategies to address opportunity. And then it cuts off there, Erica, for improvement. And I was gonna say review for improvement. And those are our four recommendations. And, um, I will turn it over to Ms. Virginia.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Um, we're, just a reminder, we're gonna go through the, um, voting process at a later time, which is where we'll have discussion. Next one up, Erica.
Um, so, uh, Patrick, you wanna, um, go ahead and do your, your group?
Yeah, yeah. I'll, uh, David, I'll just, uh, am I allowed to share right now?
I am making you co-host now, and now you are able to share.
Uh, okay, I see.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, perfect. Uh, thank you, Patrick, and good evening, everyone. Um, my name is David Harrington, and I had the, um, uh, pleasure of, of chairing this subcommittee. So if you go to the next slide, and these are our recommendations. Before I, you know, go, uh, to our recommendation, I want to thank the subcommittee for their, um, wonderful participation and, uh, really wanted to thank them for their incredible insights that was certainly instrumental to us getting to this point. And I wanna recognize them, uh, um, publicly, Dr. Donna Christie, who is with the Prince George's County Educators Association. Thank you, Dr. Christie. Doris Reed. Oh, should be president. I'm sorry. I, I looked it up and it said treasurer. So my apologies. I actually think the treasurer may in fact be a more powerful position since you have the money. But, um, but I apologize, President of the Prince George's County Educators Association, Doris Reed, who's the Executive Director for the Association of Supervising Administrative Schools, uh, Administrators. I think, uh, one of the most important positions is Courtney Green, who has a child in our school system. But I just learned who is a amazing artist and, uh, who teaches art in DC. So I want everyone to recruit, um, Ms. Green back to, back to Prince George's County, so that she can, uh, teach art to art. Um, Linda Thornton Thomas, who's the President of the Prince George's County NAACP. And then, of course, I wanna thank, uh, Patrick for his wonderful assistance, uh, in, uh, helping bring us together and provide us with the documentation. So thank you all. Um, next slide. And I invite, if I, if our subcommittee members, I invite, uh, any of them, uh, to chime in if there was anything that I, I may have missed. So we came up with, with eight recommendations. Um, the first being that the school board should consist of nine elected members and one student member. So we essentially then are returning to and elected to a school board, which will go to single-member districts. Uh, school board members should be elected from single-member districts. Uh, school board candidates are prohibited from being on slates or sample ballots. Uh, we, we think that, um, given what Dr. Thornton had talked about in trying to now, um, get a broad range of candidates and to remove then, um, the Senate and, uh, also other, uh, uh, influence of slates that will only influence and only select certain candidates. And so we believe that the school board candidates should not be on slates or sample ballots so that people can make, uh, choices based on, uh, who is presenting the best case for being on the school board. The school board should elect its own chair and vice chair for one-year terms. The powers and responsibilities of the school, excuse me, the powers and responsibilities of the school board chair should be codified in the new law that, uh, certainly the General Assembly considered. We believe that the school board elections should allow for public financing. We had a robust discussion around, uh, raising monies, uh, and again, in light of trying to get a broad range of candidates, uh, to participate in this election, uh, certainly, uh, we should supply the option of public financing like we do in the gubernatorial race right now. Public financing so that then, uh, money is not a prohibitive factor for someone who wishes to run for school board. Excuse me. Uh, we're not sure if, if, uh, these were in our charge, but we're gonna put them out there anyway. And as a school board must update their bylaws at least every four years. Um, and that the, we should change this, change, um, go back to calling, uh, the head of our school system, um, to superintendent. So right now, a CEO, and we should go back to the superintendent position. Let me, uh, before I conclude, then let me ask any of my, uh, colleagues who are on, who served on the, um, subcommittee, is there anything that, um, I did not lift up? Okay, so, uh, Chair Jacobs, that then concludes, uh, my report.
Thank you. We'll get questions when we have the presentation for votes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Harrington. And now, um, Ms. Jacobs, we actually have your subcommittee, and I know John Erzen will be, um, sharing for your group. So let me just make my.
Yeah, I just need that permission, and I'll get that up there.
Yeah, you want so right now? Okay, you should be good, John.
Okay.
Good thing I have my glasses. Okay, so we had, um, I wanna thank the committee members for, um, our diligence in trying to get through, um, the tasks that we had before us. And so we have, our recommendations are as follows. Um, the recommendation, um, this was board duties, responsibilities, and powers. Um, and then, of course, we had, um, an adjustment around different things around the ethics committee and panel. So, um, the, um, first recommendation is to provide an overall statement outlining the recommendation and include high-level goals and objectives. Hold on, let me show me this right. Um, okay, so redefine the purpose of the county board of education is outlined in the code to ensure the highest level of academic achievement and engagement. And that is just a rephrasing of, um, what was viewed as, um, not necessarily, um, the most positive language when we're talking about the changes. And so, um, the current law requires that the board simply raise the level, and we're, um, recommending that it, um, is changed. It is the opinion of the subcommittee that the purpose of the Board of Education should be to use best management practices to ensure that the standard for academic achievement of the county students should be elevated to the highest possible, ensuring that the decisions of the board are aligned with the goal of providing students in Prince George's County an education of the highest quality. Um, if you could go up just a little bit, I think this is. John, thank you. Um, the next one was, um, yeah, these aren't broken down. And let me see, hold on.
So it should be, uh, I flipped, I flipped to the next recommendation, if that's what you were.
Yeah, I'm trying to see. Okay, so the next one is around the redefining the power limits of the board. And so the language, um, currently, essentially just goes through, um, what the board should or shouldn't do. And so the language, what we, what we did was to change it so that, um, oftentimes, we don't think about the fact that the state law also provides what the superintendent's job is. So, um, current law prohibits the county board from implementing certain policies that contradict day-to-day management. And so, uh, it's the opinion of the subcommittee that these terms are overly broad and provide for undue opportunities for contention. And so what we're saying is that these limits could, should further, um, clarify with language that references specific codified definitions. And what that means is that, um, the updated language will essentially say that the county board cannot implement a policy or take any action that contradicts the day-to-day management and oversight in accordance with the current law that dictates, um, the role of the superintendent for Prince George's County. CEO is what the current language is. Okay. Next, um, redefining the general duties of the county board of education to focus on equity. So we had conversations, um, early on when we were having presentations about, um, ensuring that equity was, uh, at the forefront of, of the work that the board is responsible for. And so it's a, it's a minor change, but in terms of terms, but it does have enormous difference, difference in meaning. So redefining the general duties of the county board of education is outlined in the code to replace instances of equal or equality with equitable and equity. Essentially, that change, um, for purposes of the public is to ensure that we're talking about, um, needs-based support and services for students as opposed to everyone getting the same. And so the current law charges the board to maintain a reasonable, uniform, equal system of public schools. And, um, throughout the county, it is the opinion of the subcommittee that the language need to be moderated to align with education trends, focused on equity and education, not simply equal. And that allows for all students and their academic resources to be uplifted to the same level of achievement and access. Um, we looked at redefining the power of the county board to establish advisory committees. Um, this was also, um, an area of discussion that we heard, I think, also in public comment. And so, um, this is to redefine the power of the board, um, to require that advisory committees are representative of the demographic categories and geographic areas of the county. So essentially, this is to ensure that when advisory committees are appointed, that it's representative of the county, um, uh, from, you know, across all nine districts. Um, the next one is to redefine the removal authority for a member of the county board of education. And so in this section, redefining the removal authority, um, to remove the, this clause, um, to remove the clause that requires the approval of the governor to permit the state board of education with the removal of a member of the county board of education for what current law says is immorality, misconduct in office, incompetency, or willful neglect of duty. It's the opinion of our subcommittee that this process should align with every other county and the city of Baltimore in the state of Maryland, which does not require the governor to actively be involved in that process. And so that the state board of education should be the governing body over the county board of education, again, as it is across the state. The next area was to clarify the ability of the student member to engage in executive sessions. So what the committee decided, um, uh, as background, maintain the current roles and responsibility of the student board member as defined in the code and clarify the ability of the student member to engage in executive sessions. So this is to maintain current standards that protects the student board member from, um, undue political entanglement and then, um, and from defined sensitive items, uh, while still providing students a voice. And so the clear definitions that we thought were necessary, however, was to, um, have, be specific about when the student members are permitted in executive session. Um, and it further removes the student from conflict of interest with the public, other board members, and undue influence. Um, the next one was to codify and redefine the approval process of the ethics panel finding. So there was a lot of discussion about this, this, um, section in terms of, um, you know, governing bodies, uh, sort of selecting their own ethics panel, et cetera. So just looking at best practices across professions in general, we looked at that and, and said that, um, what we would recommend, so redefining various portions, this was charged to redefine various portions of the ethics panel as established by the Prince George's County Board of Education policy. And this is for instances that an ethics panel investigates one or more members of the board of education. And so in this case, remove the board of education's ability to vote to dismiss violations, require that settlements made by the, uh, recommendations, I'm sorry, and settlements made by the ethics panel are not subject to determination or concurrence by the board. So in other words, um, if something is brought to the ethics panel and there's a decision that's specifically related to a board member, that that information would be, um, not sent back to the board of education. It's the opinion of the subcommittee that the requirement that the board of education vote on and concur with violations regarding their own membership should be removed. So the ethics panel should have autonomy to report on any and all findings that they deem to be actual violations. And so essentially, just to restate that, is, the board of education will still have authority over issues that, that fall within the area of governance and their quasi-judicial role, except where matters impacted them directly. Thank you. That was a lot.
So, uh, we.
I just wanted to thank the committee one more time and make sure no one had anything, Erica, to add.
Sorry about that. Yes.
No worries. Okay, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, so, so we've gone through, um, we've had each subcommittee, um, um, chair, uh, present the, the subcommittee's recommendations. Um, what we proceed to do, and Ms. McCallister Jacobs will, um, facilitate this process, we will go through each recommendation. Um, and, and you will see they will be presented on a slide for you to see it full view, for easy review. And then, um, Ms. Jacobs will begin to entertain motions to accept or reject particular recommendations. We are asking for votes by your actual hand and not your Zoom hand. So that's why we also ask for you to be on camera. So when, um, there are votes taken, we're gonna ask, Ms. Jacobs, I should say, is gonna ask to have hands raised, um, depending on your position on the recommendation. So on that note, um, Ms. Jacobs, I will give it back to you, and I will bring up the, uh, PowerPoint with each of the recommendations.
Thank you. So as we go through this, we'll entertain, I think the easiest way, but I'm certainly not saying it has to be that, but to entertain a motion, um, sometimes with committees, you don't have to go through that, you know, second process, but that's where we are. So, um, for each one, we're just gonna, um, I'll entertain a motion in a second, and then we'll have discussion on each one.
All right. And just to give you some feedback, Virginia, we cannot see you. We can just see your hair. And there we go. Now we can see you. So I don't know if you were raising your hand or, um, or doing pilates. We don't know that, but, uh, thank you for coming back to the camera.
Thank you. That's what happens with these darn backgrounds. You know, our hair.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. We don't know if you were there or not, but now you're there. So.
I'm sorry.
No, no. And then, um, my next question was, um, in terms of voting, I know we're doing voting hands. If we, are we doing vote yes, vote no, and vote abstain? What, what are the rules, uh, that we are following? Uh huh.
Yeah, so, really, yep. Right, so, uh, a, a motion in a second and discussion, um, each person has the right to vote the way they want to. Um, so you can vote aye, you can vote nay, or you can abstain. Um, and, you know, I, typically, an, an abstention is, um, it doesn't have to be based on a conflict, but you have every right to vote in that way if you wanted to. Yeah. So yeah, that's, that's the typical Roberts rules, is you can vote in favor, against, or abstain. Okay, Erica, I think we're ready to go to the, any questions, though, on the process? I'm sorry, I don't wanna just jump in, um, if there are other questions about process and how we're gonna vote and proceed. Let me see if I.
One, one more question, Virginia. Uh, any limitations to us if, you know, or are we voting? If all is, all the recommendations we say are great, um, is that okay? Are we limited to something? Are we doing the top 10, five, or anything like that?
No, these recommendations came from the subcommittees, which is what our, our individual charges were as committee members. And so my understanding, Erica or John can correct this, is that whatever comes out of this committee is what would be pushed forward. Uh, and then, of course, I'll just reiterate that the legislature, you know, then it's in their hands, you know, these are only recommendations, and it will have to go through legislative and legal review, which is what any, um, piece of legislation would have to go through, including, um, I would assume, public hearings, you know, to the extent that that's part of it, right? So, um, so there aren't limitations to my knowledge of what's presented. I will say that, um, I will say that, um, you know, if something is voted down, then I would leave that to Erica and John as to how that'll be moved forward to, um, to the county executive's office. Oh, David.
You're on mute, Mr. Harrington.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I would like to saw the recommendation, but, um, that each of these has to pass by at least a, a sort of two-thirds vote. The reason why I say that is because, you know, you don't want something, I don't know how many people are voting, but let's say they're, they're what, um, it says 14 people here. So I know all of you are not voting, but you don't wanna have something like, uh, you know, a, a eight, uh, um, eight to six or something like that, or, you know, it's so close that that really doesn't reflect the, the clear majority. So I would, I would hope that, I would recommend that the voting, that each thing that passes reflects the clear majority of the, um, of the task force rather than just a simple majority.
Are you saying that in terms of whether it gets submitted or not? Um.
Yes. Yeah, so, so that, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead, Virginia.
No, I was just gonna, I was, I hate to do that, but I was gonna, I was gonna turn to, um, I, in terms of the expectation of, of our committee, just because majority rules is the typical Roberts rule. So we have, you have to agree that, yeah, we are not gonna follow that.
Yeah, so I, I didn't know. I just threw that out there. So again, when these are submitted to the county executive, this reflects the clear majority of the task force, not just a simple majority, but I throw that out as a suggestion, not necessarily, you know, like the others, you know, they have pushback on that.
So, so Ms. Jacobs, would I, would that possibly, if, if Mr. Harrington, again, had presented that idea, um, if the body, if the task force would like to, to vote on that recommendation, I, I would think that that would be appropriate, if that is something that they would like to consider. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna defer to the body for that. Um, so it's up to you.
Okay, so, um, that being the case, then I will entertain a motion, um, Mr. Harrington, and see if there's a second and any discussion about.
So I would make a motion that, uh, uh, before submission to the county executive, that each recommendation receive at least a, a two-thirds majority of those present here today.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so a motion has been made by David Harrington and second by Melanie Gamble, that the vote, um, that takes place with this committee be a two-thirds, um, that there be two-thirds in agreement with each, each. that there be two thirds in agreement with each each recommendation for it to be forwarded to the county executive. Is there any discussion on that?
Yes, I have a, I understand that that Mr. Harrington said, but what if the county executive wants to consider a recommendation that does not get two thirds of the vote? That she feels that it's important for a second look or some more investigation or 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 thereof since the task force was was charged with coming up with recommendations? How is that handled?
So one of the things that I think we want to make clear is that the county executive is deferring to this body with regard to recommendations, how you prepare and submit those recommendations to her. So again, there are, there are no hard fast rules that the county executive has created. She wants, she's trusting the members of this task force to make the decisions that they're making with regard to the recommendations. So again, we're going to follow, you know, follow those rules. And so if you guys decide that you want to do two thirds for a recommendation, those will be the recommendations that are forwarded to the county executive.
Thank you, Erica, for that clarification. And then I have one last question and concern is, in terms of our responsibility after we vote, it is, is that the end of the responsibility of this task force? Or will be, will we come back together for an any type of follow up that then needs to be done in terms of the legislation, Virginia, that you were talking about?
John, I'll defer to you on that question.
Sure. So I I think once, once everything has been voted on, I think the the staff from our office can certainly help prepare a a final report that goes to the county executive. From there, I it would really depend on what happens as we go to the legislation. You know, as as these recommendations are being considered there and if a petition is word, then certainly you could see requests from members of, I would assume this bill would would start in our local House and Senate delegations and and move through there because this would be a local bill. So certainly, there could be requests that come from the legislators to have members of the task force come and and present or or testify in some way. So we would have to see how that would work, but certainly if recommendations like that were, or if requests like that were made, then we would certainly be coming back to the task force, you know, to help facilitate that, so that could happen. But, you know, that is, that is remains to be seen as to what the pleasure of the legislature is once they have the recommendations in their hands, if they'd like to have additional conversation with the members.
Thank you so much, John.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to that the recommendation by the task force require a two thirds vote of the committee in order to forward it to the county executive? Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. If you can help me count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, okay, eight, yes. Any oppose? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, seeing none, the motion pass. Any other preliminary items? Oh, Mr. Harrington?
Thank you. So are there eight voting members present? If that's the case, then two thirds would be what, six, I think? All right.
Yes. Let me count one.
There's actually 12 voting members present, I believe.
Ten.
Okay, so four people didn't vote in the last.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, did I, let me see. I have to expand my screen because maybe I didn't see everybody. Did you all count, Erica?
I mean, it passed by majority.
Yeah, I know that, but I I'm trying to get to what is the two thirds present.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That's right.
It would be eight for 12 people. It'd be, yeah, it's eight.
It'll be eight. Okay, okay, that's all I wanted. Thank you. Matt, Jeff, you have also, I I have another motion to make then, and may I? Okay, I'm just going to test the body. I'm prepared to move all the recommendations right now.
I would second it.
There's a motion on the floor to move all the recommendations, and it sounds like there's a second from Dr. Christie. Is there any discussion on that?
I see that Sue is waving her hand. I believe she has a point.
I have no problem with that, but I'd like to make one small change and and make an amendment in the first task force, the one that talks on compensation. And it happens to be in the third recommendation, and it is literally a one word change. But it's also in the same spirit, Virginia, as you had with the equal and equity. In this particular one, in recommendation three, which reads, school board members will avail themselves of all professional development opportunities, including conferences sponsored by, and on and on. The sentence, in addition, board members says should report publicly their professional development, that reports need to be oral and written delivery. My amendment would be that, in addition, board members shall report. So it makes it an imperative. It's not in question. And it then becomes in line with the last sentence, which say reports need to be oral and written delivery. And maybe that's picky, but given the error of transparency and accountability, I think that would make it just a little more solid. So I'd like to, I move to change.
Have my Roberts rules in check right now. Oh, go ahead, Doris, before I say what I was gonna say.
I I'm, what I'm looking at says shall.
Yeah.
I was going to.
I was gonna say that. It says, it says shall. I thought it said so.
So that's what I was gonna come in and say. So Sue, as I told you, then we had each individual recommendation. I know I had some discussion about shall, and the spreadsheet that we presented earlier did not have that language, but I wanted to ensure that shall was included in the language here. So that is what's here for each of those recommendations.
Wonderful, and I appreciate that. So I withdraw that need. There's no need to have that extra amendment.
Okay, I think I had it too. I was gonna say, here's how we're gonna do this. Okay. So the motion on the floor is to accept all the recommendations. There's been a proper second and any other discussion around that? Okay, going once. All right, all in favor of the motion, the motion on the floor is to accept all the recommendations that have been submitted by each subcommittee and the task force that was established by the county executive, I'm putting your words in, sorry, Mr. Harrington. But the task force established by the county executive, that all these recommendations, if they pass, will go forward if we have a two thirds vote. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. I have eight ayes. I guess I should say nine because I am voting.
Yeah.
I think you have 11.
You have 11.
I don't know if you see everybody on your screen. You might need to scroll.
Okay, 11, thank you. Any opposition? Let me see if I can expand even more. I have to do it this way. Okay. Any abstentions? Seeing none. Motion passes. Okay. So it looks like all of the recommendations that were submitted by the subcommittees, the task force has passed by a two thirds vote and would be reported, submitted to the county executive. I'm gonna turn it back over. Are there any other items that we need to address relative to the recommendations, or does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
I I just want to thank you for stepping in for this very important final meeting and voting for our vote on the recommendations. We really do appreciate it, and I and I trusted that you would do well because of your previous, previous experience as chair. So, you know, those Robert rules of orders kind of stay there with you for a long time. So.
Trying to hem me up.
I had my book here just in case.
Me too.
Also, I know, actually, John, I'll give it over to you for, you know, our thank yous and and all of those good things.
Sure, thank you, Erica, and and let me echo Erica's sentiments as well. Ms. Jacobs, we thank you for stepping in in Dr. Coleman's absence. I know he had hoped to to join us tonight, but he is on travel and he is probably still on his plane. He had hoped to get in in time to be able to join us, but we'll certainly let him know the outcome of of the meeting tonight. And really, on behalf of the county executive, I want to thank all of you for your work. You know, this is not an easy thing to do. And there are a lot of things that that had to be considered, and and we know from from these recommendations and and the work that you did, you know, both as a full task force and and in your subcommittee groups, that that you put a lot of time and and thought into the recommendations that were ultimately presented here tonight and and voted on unanimously to move forward. So we certainly thank you for your your time. We thank you for your service in in this way. And certainly, you know, I know all of you are are continuing to, you know, do things and and work throughout the county in ways that are that are very beneficial to to all of our residents, and we certainly thank you for that. So next steps, we will, as I said, the each subcommittee had a a staff person from our office assigned to help you work through the work on the subcommittees. So they'll be reaching out to you just to work to finalize a report that can be officially presented to the county executive. As that's happening, as everyone knows, the the general assembly is in session, and I I see Dr. Coleman is joining us. So we're gonna get a very quick recap for him in just a moment. But as as everyone knows, the general assembly is in session right now. So even as we're preparing the final report, we do officially have these recommendations presented, voted on, and unanimously moved forward. So we will move the recommendations immediately forward to the county executive so that she is able to move them forward to the general assembly. And from there, as I said earlier, when Dr. Smith was asking her question, should members of the the general assembly reach out to you and and would seek further information from you? If they reach out through us, we'll we'll let you know that. If they reach out to you directly, you know, as they have the ability to do, you know, you're certainly free to engage with them in in any way that 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 you'd like to, to to talk about these recommendations and and how you got to them. And and we'll go from there. That is where we are in the process. And and Dr. Coleman, thank you for for joining us. I know you're traveling and and having to move around. We we have actually come to the end, end of the meeting to to give a quick recap for you. The the recommendations were presented and into the the formal voting process, Mr. Harrington made a motion to move all of the recommendations forward. The motion was seconded and and unanimously approved to move all of the recommendations forward to the county executive. So that is, that is where we ended up. So and and I do, and just doing some closing remarks here, I do want to turn to you to be as the chair, certainly to 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 address the group and 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 share your thoughts.
Thank you. I'm trying to pause while the the announcements are going on behind me. I really appreciate this opportunity to to join this task force with you. I think that is a great opportunity for us to really give to our community and and have that opportunity to mold our community. It has been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you and not just to chair, if you will, the task force, but to actually learn from you as well. I I always believed in I and I, so I am a part of my community and my community is part of me. So I think we did this together, and I'm really proud of the recommendations. I was able to view them before today's meeting and and work with John, Patrick, Ron, Erica, to, you know, to to hear the rationales behind each and every recommendation. I think that, guys, we did it. I think that we looked at best practices. We looked at best practices locally, across the field, and we listened to the public. I think that the process really saw it, saw itself through, and we were just ushers of of that process. Well, thank you very much. I can ramble on and on, John. I just got off of a 13 hour flight, so I'm going to stop there.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman. We certainly appreciate you making the effort to join us tonight. I know it is not easy when you're in travel like that. And, you know, just, I know you came on as 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 I was talking a little bit, so just wanted to it certainly applies to you as well. You know, we we thank, we thank you. We thank this entire task force for the work that you put in. Not easy work to do. You know, a lot to look at, a lot to consider. But but again, we we just thank you for all the the time and effort, which I think is is reflected in in the final work product that that you have now voted on this evening. And we look forward to sharing with the county executive and and then moving into the next steps to share with our House and Senate delegations in the general assembly and and working on next steps from there. So with that, again, thank you on behalf of our county executive. Sure that we will all continue to to see each other as as we go about the business of Prince George's County and certainly as we go through this process now with the general assembly. And just the the final note, just as a quick mention again, also for Dr. Coleman's benefit, each of the staff members who were assigned to the help the subcommittees through their work will be reaching out to help coordinate, just taking your recommendations and and turning them into a a final written document that can be put together to present a a final report to the county executive. But we will take the recommendations voted on this evening, put them together just as a whole so we can move those forward to the general assembly for additional consideration. And with that, if there are no other comments, thank you again, everyone, and enjoy your evening and look forward to seeing everybody again as we go on about the business of Prince George's County. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.